Good evening, everyone, and welcome. For tonight's council meeting, we do have two quick items before we start the official agenda. First up tonight, we do have a recognition of the Saco Soccer Club, the Girls U9 Team. Hold on, I'm not done. The Saco Soccer Club is a nonprofit organization that is run entirely by volunteers that provide the opportunity for both boys and girls ages eight through thirteen in Saco, Dayton, and Old Orchard Beach to improve their soccer skills in competitive league format. The U9 Saco Soccer Team went undefeated, six and oh, in a tournament play this season. The team ended their season with an incredible ten, one, and two record. The girls had a ton of fun and all while improving their skills. The team this year included twelve girls, who I would like to recognize: Audrey Collins, Cora Casely, Eva Harris, Evelyn Thompson, Grace Hawkes, Hannah Olet, Lydia Fortier, Madeline Dubois, Mia Thibodeau, Rose Sharlin, Sadie Archer, and Scarlett Robersch. I would also like to recognize the coaches, Paul Collins and Natalie Sharlin, for a very successful first year of coaching the girls together. I, along with the city council members, would like to congratulate these players and for their hard work and dedication to the support, to the support, excuse me. The community is proud of you, girls. Congratulations. All right, if you guys would like to join me up here in the corner, and the council members will get a nice photo? Thank you again, girls, and congratulations. Okay, next up, we do have a workshop with the Planning Director for Housing, Part One. We'll give it just a few moments as Director Prescott is on her way in.
Good evening. We had a sit walk for the planning board, so we had that right before this. So, thank you for hearing us tonight for this workshop. We're really gonna break this up into a few workshops, I think, either two or three, depending on how long we're gonna need, going to need to talk about this topic. Housing is a broad and large topic, especially interconnected with growth and some of the discussion we had last week. So, some of the workshops topics we talked about last week, I had anticipated we were gonna dive into this week as initial topics, so you're already ahead, which is great. So, tonight, I'm gonna be relatively brief. I'm gonna give you the data snapshot and some information on how we've been tracking housing growth, and just know that we'll be back here with more details, more information on next steps of where we're gonna go with our housing action plan, and we're just in the process of getting that very started. So, as a reminder, last year around fall time, we came to you with LD 2003 Ordinance Amendments, which you all passed ahead of schedule, ahead of the state deadline. Saco became compliant with that at the end of October, which was good, and that follows our comprehensive plan goals on housing. And I just brought these up here. You already saw the slides, so you know what these goals are and what we're working toward. One thing that's interesting to Saco is we do have a lot of different ways people live, so that's, it's nice to see that there is already a variety built into the housing stock we have. Some updated growth data snapshots, we did provide last year this data up until 2023, so we worked with our assessing department to update that again. So, what we're seeing is one hundred twenty new, one hundred twenty-one new housing units have come online from April to April. When I say come online, they are now being taxed. Again, this is assessing data. We will come back to you with more details on how this breaks out. I'm sure you're gonna wanna know where the city is growing more than, where it's growing the highest versus the lowest areas, but this is, again, just the, some of the snapshots that we have. We also thought it was important to monitor accessory dwelling units because the city did increase the size, it could be from eight hundred square feet to a thousand, as well as adopt the LD 2003 provisions, and so we have in our records that there were twelve permitted in that time period. So, within the range of what we've been seeing. It's always good to take a look at where our commercial square footage is growing and how it's growing, so at least right now, I can give you square footage of commercial space that's been added. We'll wanna look a little bit more closely at what this commercial square footage space is, but this is good info to have as well. I did wanna highlight Maine's Housing Production Needs Study. You probably saw some of this information in the local news, so overall, there's been an underproduction of housing in the state of Maine. I'm not telling anyone anything they haven't heard or seen. I just thought it would be important to get some data from that study as well, so you have it, and we can certainly provide you the full study, copies of it, if you'd like, but I do have the link here where you can read the full study. And generally, in the coastal areas of Maine, we're gonna need to see, according to this study, a production of homes, a future need of, to 2030. So, not only making up for historic underproduction of housing, but also future need of housing. And this is really the state's study to support jobs and growth. So, it's very timely that we are doing this plan and that the council is taking this item up for further amendment. So, the next steps for us, what we would like to do is also come back to you on the growth discussion we started. I do wanna ask that councilors complete the reports that we submitted or provided to you in September, so I can pass those out, again, as hard copies here, and if you can send them to city administration, that would be excellent. What we're gonna do is follow up on a lot of that good discussion we had at the last workshop, where housing was a primary topic. I know growth was also a topic, and we're gonna provide a housing workshop number two to follow up on this, get a little bit more into the weeds on the data, and then hopefully be able to report out to you, once we have your reports back, report out to you on our long-range planning, comp plan implementation reporting tool. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Director Prescott at this time? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Emily, I appreciate the insights here and some of the work that you've been doing. I think we do need statistical data that you're obviously trying to provide us here, so I would encourage that we have more of that. I know that you've got a factor in here of new units that have been assessed. I think we have to actually get our heads around what's in, currently in the planning board pipeline, what has been approved but not yet permitted, so that we have a broad range of workflow that's already in the pipeline. So, I appreciate that and would ask that we continue to expand the scope of that data. I'd also, I've done a little bit of work on this myself, but I'm not sure that we should rest on my calculations, but I think we need to dig into that state study a little more deeply. I recognize that the state, and I'm not taking exception to the statistical analysis that they did, but they get these eighty thousand four hundred units, and, you know, it's likely somewhat of a utopian expectation, not that we can't achieve that, but I'd also, as a representative here of taxpayers, I think we need to determine what portion of that growth is our responsibility as a city, and that we don't get too caught up worrying about solving the statewide housing crisis, but focus here on what we need here in Saco, and it's pretty, it's pretty broad and diverse. If I, my rough calculations are any indicator, and I focus exclusively on population in that coastal district that is engaged in that report, our, our fair share of that eighty thousand four hundred units over a seven-year timeframe, which I think is aggressive, is about two hundred units, and we've, that's units being built, so we're one twenty-one versus two hundred, so we have some room there to contribute to the problem, but I'm not, I'm a little uncomfortable if we're gonna push that, that limit any, any higher than that. So, we need to get our arms around that as well. If, if ten years is a more pragmatic expectation, which I think it might be, that average units per year comes down to one thirty-nine, then we're pretty close, okay? So, so my only point is, is that at some point in our conversation, we need to collectively get our heads around what is Saco's fair share of this growth requirement, and then we put our heads together and try to figure that out. The fact that you're tracking commercial square footage is a good thing, because we can't be just, we can't continue to develop residential housing to solve a residential need without balancing that against some offsetting commercial tax base, so I'm glad that we're tracking that. So, the metrics we need, I would also be very, very interested in how, even if we try to achieve our share, share of this growth, what impact that, that could potentially have on our school funding formula, and I think that's something that we may need some input from the superintendent, that funding formula, I've been taking, they've taken me through that two or three times, pretty complicated, but property valuation is a big factor. So, encouraging growth is one thing, if it's, if we encourage growth and it, and it's detrimental to our funding formula, it puts even more burden on our taxpayers. So, I look forward to this discussion, and again, I'm gonna remind my colleagues here, we're sitting in these seats, and our, our responsibility is to the taxpayers of the city of Saco, so we need to figure out a way that we can encourage growth that is productive, is smart, satisfies needs, but does not push the envelope so far that we're burdening our taxpayers with, with even more. And the other, the other thing that we, I think we can acknowledge to this point is, through all this development, to my knowledge, we've had very limited affordable component, some, but not to the extent that we need, and so as we're trying to marshal this growth forward, I think we need to come up with some incentives to developers to come in and actually put in housing that meets our affordability definition and workforce housing definitions that are being worked on. So, that's my two cents. Thanks.
And if I may, on the housing production study, I just wanna make sure we were all aware of it, not encouraging that we determine how much we're gonna need to build based on that or encouraging growth. I just wanna make sure that everyone was aware of it and aware of how to access it and find it.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Maybe to build upon or echo some parts of what Counselor Hatch just said, I think I mentioned at our, at our last workshop, in my mind, the pressing challenge is to balance the, the need for growth against our existing infrastructure challenges. And when we think about units to be developed, of course, not all units are equal. When I, when I think about a, building a single-family house with a family of four, you know, they, they pay taxes, but they also send kids to school, and there's a cost to educate per pupil, and they utilize parks and rec, and they utilize a variety of city services, and in general, when we build a single-family house and, with kids, that ends up costing the city money. We, we spend more on that family than we generate in tax income. That changes quite a bit if we build houses targeting seniors, or if we build workforce housing targeting, you know, young families or couples that don't have children or, or other types of housing. Also, the density of housing changes quite a bit, how many new roads we have to build and service, and if we build it in existing, you know, areas with, that are walkable and have existing sewer versus building out those things. And so, I'd be curious, as part of our discussion, for the council to engage in those kinds of topics, too, right? What kind of housing do we wanna build? Where do we wanna build it? What kind of populations are we targeting? And where does that fit into the mix? Again, addressing these, these two challenges, and affordability, as I mentioned last time, too, should be a, a primary concern, both really technically affordable housing, but also just increasing the stock and increasing starter homes to make housing generally more affordable. So, I hope those things get put into the conversation also.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone asking for any recognition.
Well, thank you for this initial workshop, and we'll be back.
Now, do all the council, did you have the email from Emily that she sent with the resend it or hard copy?
We have hard copies, so if you want to, you could drop it off at my office or send it, if you have the email version, send it to me. This is very important so that we get a feel for the policies that you want us to try
So, if we could, by November eighteenth, the latest, kind of put a deadline date, possibly, two weeks for everybody?
It'd work.
Okay, great. So, yeah, if we could get those returned by the eighteenth. Okay, that now takes us to our regular meeting for the evening, so welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, November fourth, 2024, at six forty-nine. Would like to make note that all members of council are present this evening, including City Administrator Mahenko. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, an empty republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That now takes us to item number five this evening, and that is committee correspondence to council, any council members wishing to provide updates. Counselor Ginn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to read it verbatim, but I seem to have lost it on my iPad, so I'll just remind the public that this Saturday, I believe from nine to three at Thornton Academy in the atrium, is the Age Friendly Wellness Fair. It's a great event. It's going to have a lot of vendors, a lot of information for our sixty-five and over community in terms of living better and living smart, and I was gonna say it's free to attend, but you do have to call first to register, and I believe the information is on our website, and if I get it later, I can let everyone know while we're still here in the meeting, though, but it is on the city of Saco website and our social media, and I encourage everyone who's interested to attend. It's a great event, and they put on a great show. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I actually do have the info right here. You can sign up by sending an email to agefriendlysocco@gmail.com or calling two zero seven seven one zero five zero two nine. Okay, anyone else? Okay, moving on to item number six, and that is public comment. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak to council. the record, and you will have three minutes to speak to council.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. Again, I apologize for my late email today concerning the commercial solar field fees action item. However, I believe a stakeholders' contrasting countervailing viewpoint is essential for your deliberations and decisions for what is best for the city of Saco. As I continue my due diligence towards this 1118 public hearing, I hope that you request any written, yes, written documentation, the trust but verify approach, any concerns that you may need to follow up in responses at tonight's first reading or prior to the next meeting. And, and those questions and/or responses, emails, to be included in the next packet for transparency and full disclosure. Also, as a former ZORs appointee in a hearing, Counselor Johnston's remark last week concerning sign ordinances, I must emphasize that Counselor Hatch's repeated attempts of minor zoning amendments to strengthen definition weaknesses prior to future applications, and Counselor Johnston's repeated reminders of a sign ordinance that went poof. It, it was gone. I was on the committee. Gone. I reported it. It's never come back. We, it's been years. We need the sign ordinance back, especially what we've seen at this recent election time. And as I reported, and, and did, and many others was on the subsequent amendments list created by ZORs and planning board members, is now still kicked down the road, when I now realize that we have had four council agenda packets regarding commercial solar fees, and that time staff and council spent, to me, is not balanced and not best for the city of Saco. And on a personal note, for the first and last time, I'm addressing Ward One Counselor Marshall, my son. You continue to be an inspiration and a teacher to me. I, I have enjoyed your journey through life and your accomplishments. And I'm only going to name a few because it goes forever.
You have a few.
Forty-three seconds. I'm working on it. That, I lost, I'm getting emotional, your service as a Marine, as an AMVets commander, as a Saco counselor for seven years, as deputy mayor this year. Thank you, Jody, and council for that, and chamber chair, and hopefully tomorrow as state representative, District 29. All the very best to you as you continue to design the life you wish to live. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. If there's anyone else wishing to step forward and speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven, there is no approval of the minutes this week. Item eight, consent items, we do have one item, and that is confirmation of ward clerk appointment. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Any discussion on the consent items? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Now takes us to item nine, and that is action items this evening. First item A is a first reading, petition for zoning map amendment filed by Erin Gregory to rezone a portion of 148 Flag Pond Road, Map 76, Lot 12 through 2, from the industrial I zoning district to the low-density residential LDR zoning district. And that is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Erin Gregory has filed the enclosed petition for zoning map amendment to rezone a portion of 148 Flag Pond Road, Map 76, Lot 12-2, from the industrial I zoning district to the low-density residential or LDR zoning district. Staff looks forward to answering any questions. I move to approve the first reading of the petition for zoning map amendment filed by Erin Gregory, and further to schedule the public hearing for December 9th, 2024.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So I spoke a bit about this last week. I don't know if I have a whole lot to add this week. I'm sure as this moves along to the second and final, I probably will. But I, I did want to point out several additional things after we left this meeting. Last week, I went and reviewed my notes and minutes from that ZORs process, and had found that the September 2020 Planning Board slash ZORs joint group that it ultimately became had addressed this issue as far as switching from single-family or LDR to industrial use. That was one of those, as, as Ms. Archer just spoke to, it was one of the items on the list of, of things to address at a later date. And the outcome or the consensus at that time was that that topic should have been referred to the long-range planning committee and, and comp plan. Clearly, that was not the action taken. I, I certainly felt, you know, this was a rush topic right after the zoning ordinance was adopted in 2021 by, you know, whoever. But it, it certainly felt at that time, and I think I did indicate that, hey, you know, what happened here? We already addressed this, and the outcome was that more effort should be looked into this because there are implications. So, you know, based off that action that council took in 2021, you know, we actually created two non-conforming lots by taking those residential lots and putting them into the industrial zone. So today, we have two non-conforming lots. It's just another example of, you know, making zoning decisions without really looking at the full picture. Now, the applicant at the time desired that. It was beneficial to him. Clearly, now the applicant, it's not beneficial. They want to build a house. So I just, I, I fall back on, you know, my prior statement with this area, and really all zones where we're making zoning changes, you really have to look at the holistic approach, not based off one individual that says, hey, I want this because it benefits me. And I, I guess, you know, again, from my position, you know, if we're going to, obviously, the applicant has, has brought forth a concern. I, I remain the belief that this needs to go through. As we indicated back in 2020, it should go to long-range planning. We should really be looking, you know, long-term for that area versus just doing this one-off to one applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, that now takes us to item B this evening, and that's a public hearing, petition for zoning text amendment filed by Cosmic Solutions LLC, represented by Cohen Law, Maine, to add adult-use marijuana manufacturing to the industrial zoning district pursuant to Title 28-B Cannabis Legislation Act. And that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Cosmic Solutions LLC, represented by Cohen Law, Maine, has filed the enclosed petition for zoning text amendment to add the use, quote, "adult-use marijuana manufacturing" to the industrial zone pursuant to Title 28-B Cannabis Legislation Act. This request is for the city of Saco to, quote, "opt-in only for adult-use cannabis manufacturing." I move to open the public hearing for the pension for ordinance text amendments filed by Cosmic Solutions.
Motion to open the public hearing has been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. If there is any member of the public wishing to speak on this item, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak to council.
Good evening. My name's Jill Cohen. When I submitted the petition, I was with Cohen Law, Maine. I'm now with Veril at One Portland Square. We submitted our zoning text amendment petition last June and have been working our way through the planning board process. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Cosmic Solutions to ask you to move this zoning text amendment forward and to answer any questions you may have. My client is at 74 Industrial Park Road. They are operating under a medical dispensary license in a building that they own at that location. And...
No, your microphone.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I always feel like I'm really loud in the microphone. I apologize. So they are already operating at that location. They cultivate for the adult-use program in Scarborough. They want to be able to process their own materials at the Saco location and possibly take in work doing extraction services for other licensees. They've been operating in Saco probably since 2018, 2017, 2018. And their business has really grown here, and they just want to be able to use the lab for both programs. The lab, as of Q1 of this year, has been engineer-certified. That was required for their relicensing this year. And so it has been checked to make sure that all the equipment is operating as it should and safely, and within the guidelines put forth by engineers who certify these types of things. This would just be an opt-in for manufacturing. You are not required to opt-in for any of the other licensed categories. So we're not asking for retail or cultivation or testing labs. It would just be this one category, and just in the industrial zone, that would allow my client to use the lab full-time for both programs. They've made a significant investment here in Saco and intend to continue to grow their business here. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are any members, other members of the public wishing to speak, please step forward. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Any discussion by council? Okay, Counselor Gunn? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Johnston?
Yeah, just when this comes back, we just get a better explanation for myself personally what or how we're defining manufacturing. I believe when I first heard this, I was thinking cannabis growing. And now I'm hearing about labs, and it sounds like we're producing something other than what I thought. And maybe I'm wrong. I just, just could someone clarify that?
Sorry, could you just repeat that, Counselor?
Just how we're defining marijuana manufacturing, adult-use marijuana manufacturing. Is that different than just growing the product?
Uh huh.
Okay. I prefer city staff, just based on the ordinance, what, what we...
Yep, we'll have that included. Okay, anyone else? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you. I move to close the public hearing on the pension for ordinance text amendments filed by Cosmic Solutions, and further move to schedule the final reading for November 18th, 2024.
Okay, motion has been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing and move to November 15th, November 18th, 2024. Passes 7-0. Okay, that now takes us to item C, and that's a public hearing, new application for a special entertainment purpose, permit for ECO Inggeria, Maine DBA Pacifico Restaurants. And that is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. ECO Inggeria, Maine, doing business as Pacifico Restaurant, has applied for a new special entertainment permit, a permit concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment 93-2. Moved to open the public hearing.
Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Parks. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. If there is any member of the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to address council. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Counselor Johnston?
Move to close the public hearing, be it ordered that the city council grant the new application submitted by ECO or ECO Inggeria, Maine, doing business as Pacifico Restaurant, for a special attainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion or comments from council? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Is it, it's usually customary for us to talk about hours of operation, and I don't see any listed on the application unless I'm missing. Oh, it does. I'm sorry. I see 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM to 12:00.
Okay, and that's consistent with what we have done with other similar licensees. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Counselor, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing and approve the order. Passes 7-0. Okay, that now takes us to item D, and that is one reading, proposed Main Street banner permit policy and application. And that is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Saco has one official area to hang banners in the downtown. However, there is no city ordinance and/or policy or protocol for hanging banners downtown. To define the process as well, assess standards on size, et cetera, the economic development team met with Saco Main Street Public Works Codes and Clerk's Office to develop a draft policy which would provide the following: a timeline for displaying banners from March 1 to December 31st, the size of banners, insurance requirements, application, and the responsibilities of the organization and the city. The city council hereby approves a Main Street banner policy and application. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion or comments? And we do have Director DeStardis here available for any... Counselor Johnston?
Well, thank you. I, I think largely what I, what I addressed last week has, has come to fruition here. The only, and I, I would offer this as a friendly amendment. I don't know if we have to officially vote on it, but it states the city of Saco events and the Saco School Department's congratulatory banners are exempt from a fee. I would just like to add Thornton Academy, since they're not part of the Saco School Department directly. So if it's okay with council, it's a clear understanding. We're not necessarily looking to charge, you know, TA when it comes to those.
We had that withheld in amendment. Okay. Okay, anyone else?
I just additionally, I would add that I'm, I'm comfortable leaving the fee. And as, you know, it was indicated last week, if, if a nonprofit has a, has an issue with the fee, they could obviously ask us to waive the fee.
Did you get that? Okay.
That is it.
And we're okay to move forward with those two items? Okay.
Right. And I could, I was figuring TA, because I looked at them as part of being at the school, but because I know that they always put the banners up for, you know, seniors and that. So I was kind of including them, but we can certainly write that out so it's more clear, most definitely. more clear, most definitely.
Perfect.
And any waiver, of course, can be done by the city council if they so choose.
You want to...
Oh, a little bit louder, okay. Any waiver can be done as requested to the city council as you may choose.
Do you want that part of the...
I don't think it needs to be part of it, but I think it could be something if people have a problem, we can then say to them, do you want to try to get this waived, and then I can bring it to the city council.
As an ex, yep. Okay, anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to clarify something for you. It's because you had mentioned as far as the fourteen days. I had also given everybody a schedule. As you can see, it's pretty busy. We were also thinking to have something that would be a citywide welcoming people to the City of Saco during, as a filler for a banner. But I did, it was up to fourteen days, and it's based upon an event, so there's no crossover, so we can have, so we can switch those out. So I just wanted to clear that with you.
Yeah, I actually see on here, because I think Bark in the Park is not a banner. That's usually right at the dog park. So that's not, we've got Music in the Park, which is displayed at Young School. Bark in the Park usually displayed right at the dog park. I don't think, we didn't have a banner, did they?
I can't remem, it should say on that list I gave.
Yeah, it doesn't, and I do think that that one traditionally is not an over-the-street banner.
Yeah, this is specific just to that presently one Main Street location, correct?
Correct.
Are we anticipating expanding it to a different location?
That would be up to counsel. I mean, what you've designated in the city that you have an area where you hang your banners, and that's all I was going for, was just that one area.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions or comments? I appreciate that clarification. Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that now takes us to item E, and that was an item tabled on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to remove from the table?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes six one. Okay, so that is a first reading, request to update and clarify the existing solar energy system electrical permit application fee, Chapter eighty-seven, electrical standards in the city's fee schedule, and that is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. While permitting one of the first commercial solar energy systems in Saco, it became apparent to the code enforcement and planning departments that there is not a clear commercial solar energy system electrical permit application fee in the city's current fee schedule. After receiving questions from counselors and the public, and after further review, the code enforcement department recommends one electrical permit application fee for all solar panel installations with a proposed fee of seven dollars per panel for the first one hundred panels and four dollars for each additional panel. The code office is also recommending to further clarify the fee schedule as noted in the exhibits. I move to approve the first reading of the request to update and clarify existing solar energy system electrical permit application fee, Chapter eighty-seven, electrical standards in the city's fee schedule, and further move to schedule the public hearing for this item on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Gosh. Let's bear with me, because I'm still pouring my thoughts on this. I guess I, personally, I understand perhaps not all counsel had the opportunity to read Ms. Archer's email, but I will say that I think largely my thoughts align with her stated concerns in much greater detail than I'm prepared to give you currently. And I certainly don't mean to nitpick this, but, you know, as it's often stated, I believe a speaker last week even said, you know, words have meaning. So I guess I would just start off with an issue with the motion itself. You know, the motion that's before us makes, for me, it's unclear or perhaps even misleading what we're trying to do here. As I often state, you know, we all have roles, and for me personally, it needs to be clear what's the expectation of my, on my part. So if you start with the motion that says a request to update and clarify existing solar energy system electrical permit application fee, whatever, whatever. Request by who? Who's making such a request, right? So, you know, at this stage, I really wouldn't term it as such as it implies a request is being made. I can't find any example in our ordinances or in my past experiences where a request to amend the fee schedule can formally be made by a member of the public. That's in contrast to say a zoning ordinance request. You can formally make that request, you pay an application fee, it comes before counsel. So there's that. I just, who's making the request? Additionally, it makes mention of solar energy system. Well, again, there's no solar energy system that I could find in the fee schedule itself. It makes reference to residential solar, and nor does it exist in any current ordinance. So we're using words and terminology that doesn't align with what we're actually doing. And then I go back to the word clarify existing. So who are we clarifying or updating for? Again, going back to the notion that if... There's that timer again. Right, so it just, again, historically, when we have addressed the fee schedule, you know, we just did this, right? We did this in September. It was for the parkings, right? The parking fees, just back, you know, two months ago. That was not presented as a request. It was presented as, hey, here's some information, here's some facts, counsel, you do what you may with it. So really, again, the language is problematic, as it appears to me, reading it, we're correcting something, we're recognizing a wrong. And I'm not implying that's necessarily what the intent is. I'm saying that's how I term, I look at this, and what I, you know, pull from it is that there's an issue. And so, again, having addressed this in September, I never really viewed there being an issue per se with the fee. I think that city staff appropriately applied a fee that was always intended going back, you know, several variations of zoning, you know, probably, perhaps, I'm going to guess, probably the 2010, where this idea of solar arrays coming into, you know, a reality for any property owner. There was an understanding because of electrical codes and all the nuances of that, that you need to have an inspection by someone certified to actually look at it, and therefore there's a fee associated with that inspection. So while the fee schedule may have said residential, solar, I don't think that there was, it was really just a solar panel or whatever term we're going to use. The idea was that a fee is charged per inspection. So the argument that, and again, I'm not, again, I'm going off the information I have. So I, from what I've read, it appears as though the applicant took exception with the fee because it didn't say specifically commercial. And again, I'm saying that I think that city staff appropriately applied a permitting fee regardless of what the term you're using is. It was stated that, you know, a panel will receive X amount of fee. I mean, you can actually look at the fee schedule and you, one would recognize that there is no residential solar anywhere in our ordinance or prior ordinances. So, you know, again, I assume when the creation of the fee schedule was, again, created, it was like, okay, well, we can call it, we plug this in. But specifically, there is no notion anywhere in our ordinance that states residential. We define them presently as small-scale energy facilities. Prior to this, you know, last ordinance, it was the solar energy system. Again, no indication as to residential. In fact, you didn't have to be a residential. The standard was as long as you're producing electricity onsite, not feeding the grid, not for commercial use, anybody was allowed to have a solar panels on their property. So I guess I would argue that anyone that was applying or has applied since then should have expect, expected, particularly in that industry, that some level of a fee would have applied to their application. So again, are we clarifying for staff or a developer? And if it's staff, I would argue that we addressed this through that, and again, it's totally acceptable for any staff to say, hey, we'd like you to address this, and we did that. It was at that new business level, which, again, going back to the motion, really, this is just an amendment to the fee schedule. It's not a request by staff. It's in our wheelhouse now. It's an act by counsel, and if you go back historically, you'll find that that is how we address this. It's an amendment to the fee schedule. So, I mean, like I said, there's that with it, that I can't help but feel as though I'm kind of being led to address something that, to me, you know, the merits of whether or not we should be charging a fee or what we should be charging a fee really should arise up organically and not stated just because one developer came forth and says, I don't like this fee. So I go back to the process, and that's when we first heard this, you know, I think it was September. And again, it was my understanding that the applicant, based on the memo, had paid the seven dollar per panel that was, you know, laid out in the fee schedule. At that time, based on that memo, the developer was suggesting four dollars, the city staff had suggested five dollars. City council, while it was a new business item, I felt there was at least three, maybe four of us that felt seven dollars, which what we were charging was appropriate. Now it's been suggested that, you know, we're going to charge seven per a hundred and then four thereafter, which I guess is a compromise, perhaps. I don't, I don't know who made that compromise. Like I said, the last time we addressed the fee, it seemed as though counsel was moving in the direction of seven, and I remain committed to the seven. But again, this weekend reviewing this, going back and reading all the way back to September, it became even more problematic for me when I reread the Blue Wave memo, because I didn't necessarily catch it first time around what, and again, I'm just pulling out what I read. But it certainly implies, based on the language, that, you know, number one, the memo was advocating on behalf of themselves, right? So the applicant or prior applicant is now saying, well, I've paid these fees, but now I want to change those fees. And I have exception with these fees. And I would say that if you had exception with those fees, why did you wait eight months to raise your hand and say, I have a problem with these fees? At any point, number one, don't pay them. Oh, I understand, you wouldn't get your permits. So there's, it seems as though there's an action where it's like, well, I'll pay the fees now and I'll ask for forgiveness later or ask for counsel to address this later. And again, I, the process seems flawed to me because while I can't, nothing here necessarily indicates that they're seeking a refund. The language in that memo implies that that is what they're seeking, and I can't address that I'm not them, but the way I read this is they're hopeful, and that's what the request is, right? To clarify the existing solar ordinance, I would say this amendment, any amendment, would be applied for anything new, not in the past. This isn't retroactive. So again, that's a concern I guess I still have is, what am I being asked to do? Am I being asked to address a perception that our fees are too high overall, just in general? Or am I being asked to address one applicant's opinion that they've paid too much, and now we're going to correct that by changing the fee schedule on behalf of them? So I guess that, I think, like I said, Ms. Archer, in greater detail, lays out other issues, but I'll kind of leave it at that for now and hope that maybe we'll have some answers from city staff specific to what was in that email. Thank you.
City Administrator?
Sure. Basically, you are correct. There was some request in that whole process, but as a result of that, we started taking a look at what the fee was. And it's important to look at what we did, where we did an analysis of how much it costs per panel to inspect, and because of the larger number, it was, once it gets going, there's a lesser cost to it. I really don't want to get into any details, but I would say that you have to be careful, this council, any council, on fees that you levy, that those fees are not construed as a tax. So it's important that, you know, we levy fees that are, in a way, that we can recoup the time that our inspectors spend out inspections. So it, I think people are reading too much into this from the staff perspective. I don't have a problem. If you leave it at seven dollars, you may get it challenged at some point, which is fine, but all I was trying to do, I really, really never came up with the thought process that you did, Counselor. I really was just talking to the staff about, okay, are we okay if we charge this amount of money? Can we justify charging this amount of money? If the council wants to stay at seven dollars, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure you knew our thought process on it.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm a little confused about the email and the discussion about a particular former applicant. As I recall, we had a situation in which, for the first time, we had a major solar project proposed in the city, and that led to some discussion about holes in our code, about what a fair and appropriate fee would be, pointing out a gap in our ordinance. As it was the first time, we asked our code enforcement officer and staff to keep track of the time and costs that were spent on that process and then propose what would be a fair fee. They came back with a proposal that would have created different fees for residential and commercial. There was some pushback about that, which then led to the current proposal of different costs for the first hundred solar collector panels and a different cost for additional ones to create an equitable fee schedule for commercial and residential. And I assume, as with all such processes, that this is simply going forward to apply to new projects in order to create a fair and equitable fee, and in that vein, I can fully support it. If there is something more, refunds, paying back fees, I assume that would come to counsel separately for, as a separate point of discussion. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, no, I can certainly respect how staff went about determining the appropriate free fee, rather. The challenge remains that, you know, perception here, and I'm not saying it's accurate, I'm just saying the perception. If I was on the outside looking in, heck, from the city council, when I look at it, I go, wait a second, we had a set fee, we have an applicant that makes a request, and that's what that memo is, unless I'm not capable of reading English. It seems clear to me that they're saying, and I don't have it directly in front of me, but it basically states, hey, we pay... me, but it basically states, hey, we paid 95, and it would be fairer if we paid 50-something. And this, and we've worked with city staff behind the scenes to arrive at this. And again, I remain perplexed because who directed city staff to work with the applicant while they're going through a process? My understanding is that they were being inspected during that period, and they're also, I guess, arguing whether or not they should be charged these fees. And I guess there was a breakdown in the process, because from my perspective, if there was a challenge to those fees, if they're saying this is too much, or they're questioning the language, being, well, it says residential, why didn't they immediately stop there and come to council for clarification? Because again, the perception here is that this applicant, after the fact, they've paid, sends us this memo, says, oh, it's great to work with the City of Saco, hoping that we'll make these amendments to the fee schedule. When our, historically, our process for the fee schedule, we wanted to make these amendments, is that the budget process. Now, amendments occur throughout the year when they rise up from, we recognize an issue, right? We're not charging enough or whatever, or we need a new fee. So that can come up through staff or even from council. But here, just based on what's presented, it seems clear to me that we're going with $4 because that's what the applicant advocated for. And I'd be hard pressed to be convinced otherwise, there, just based off what's in the packet. It seems pretty clear, and I think the public would look at it and say, okay, so, again, it is what it is. The council can do what they want with it. I look at everything I do from this dais as precedent setting, and what am I saying? What I'm saying by this is that challenge every fee that the City of Saco has, after the fact, before the fact, do whatever you want, and, you know, ultimately, we'll, I guess, cave.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, please.
Well, first of all, they paid $98,000. They paid $7 a panel.
Yeah, excellent.
Secondly, they asked me, can I pay this? And asked me if it could be refunded. I said, no. That's number two. Let me finish.
Counselor Johnston, let him speak first.
Excuse me, I asked a question earlier on about, is that what the intent is? And that hasn't been addressed. Have they?
Let me answer you.
Counselor Johnston, let him please finish. He's trying to answer your question, and then if you need to continue.
Yeah, go ahead.
Counselor, I said no to them. That they said, can we get a refund? I said, no. Well, I said, the only time, you know, you have to wait for any adjustments, or if the $7 is there and you want to apply, you've got to pay the $7. And they complained about it, but I said, no. And they said, well, can you guarantee that we'll get a refund? I said, no. I said, that has to come to the city council. For whatever reason, people are reading too much into this, because I talked this, the people probably once about this, and the only time they called me was to talk about if they could get a refund. And I said, no. It has, it would have to go through the city council. So number one, we followed all the requirements and we charged them $7 a panel. Number two, if they came to us and said, can I have a refund? We said, no, you'd have to go to the city council. The third thing is that we wanted to actually, coincidentally, with when we brought this back to the council, the review of it with the electrical inspector and the amount of time that was spent on it came out to about $4 a panel. So that was done separately and didn't even include the contractor. So from my perspective, everything the city council, excuse me, the city staff did was pretty much following up on what we thought was going to be a fair and equitable fee for solar panels for commercial. I could ask, you know, David Toomey to come in to talk about the, if he would come forward, to talk about the, how we arrived at the $4 fee, which I just explained, but if you want more information about that, he can come forward. But at this point, Counselor, I think you're absolutely right. The council wants to leave it at $7, they can leave it at $7, which is fine. Our responsibility as a staff is to let you know where possible problems could occur. And a problem can occur if you're charging $7 a panel. You've got to be able to back up that it's costing you almost close to $7 a panel, not... Now, you know, if you have a $4 to a $7 panel, that can be construed as, as I said earlier, a tax. But again, it's our role to tell you what we have found. It's your role to let us know what you want us to do. And that's all we're asking tonight. If the council votes against this, the $7 will stand in the fee schedule. It's fine. No problem.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So first of all, I'd say thank you for the additional information. That has been part of the issue here, is that I have what's before me in a packet. I've had to make some insinuations or based on what's been, you know, presented, but now I'm clearly hearing that an applicant did ask for a refund, which you correctly said, no. It's still, they still have, in a roundabout way, have asked for some level, it's not... That, again, I have the floor. That memo that's in this packet was very clear that that's what they were seeking, in my opinion. Now, number one, I don't think you can peel, can come forward and ask for that forgiveness based off, again, past practice of council when it comes to these fees. But again, I haven't, I'm not questioning city staff's process and how they went about this, other than, like I said, in this, in this document or this memo, it states that, you know, they've been in conversation for several months with city staff about these fees, and I'm still wondering why council wasn't brought in at that stage, so that we could address it then in a manner that doesn't feel as though we're arriving at the number they gave us. So that is what it is there.
I had one meeting on this with the staff, one. One, I can ask the staff to come forward. When you say many months, quite frankly, it only came, let me, let me finish. It came to my attention, and I said, okay, we need to deal with this. And I, and we came to you, and we basically had a fee that we wanted to put into place, and there was a request by a council member, I can't remember who it was, that said, could you please come find out how much time the electrical inspector spends on these inspections? And I'll ask, at this point, I'll ask David to come forward and tell you how we went about finding that out. Quite frankly, I spoke to those people once, you know, once, when they called me about the fee because they wanted to get moving on the project. And I said, you've got to pay the fee that's in the fee schedule. That's it.
So in regards to those fees, that's part of the problem I'm having, the fee should have been charged fully when they first applied, no? They paid $7,000. Then they had...
No, no, they paid 98,000. Oh, you mean the first...
In the end, August, they paid the full amount.
Right.
That's a couple days before they made this request. So why weren't the permitting fees charged during the permitting process that they were inspected? Or were they? I don't know. The documentation doesn't...
The only response I have on that is we're making a mountain out of a molehill.
Well, you say that, and I can see how...
I do say that.
You, I can see how one could view that, but I look at historically how these things have gone on and arrive at, well, how did we get here?
I apologize that I don't know the historical nature of how things come to...
I'm saying throughout, throughout city...
Gentlemen, gentlemen, please, one at a time. We do have Director Toomey.
There's a lack of transparency in this process.
Oh, come on. Oh, come on.
You just said it right before me.
Gentlemen, both, please. Take a step back for a second.
The comment was stated that the applicant made that request. Nowhere in this packet does it say that city council...
So everything I have, every conversation I have, I have to refer to the council? I have to do a verbatim?
I think it's imperative to making the decision.
Counselor Johnston, city administrator, please, again.
Like, again, I go back to rules.
Counselor Johnston, do you have a question for Director Toomey?
Simple. Were the permitting fees during April to August, were they charged as they came for the permit, or was it subsequently in August when they paid?
When they first had the project, we told them it was $7 a panel, and they thought that was high. We said, the council's the only one that can waive or lower the fees or change the fees. So they said they were going to go to the council to check on the fees. So we took a down payment of the electrical in case you would change the fees, so we wouldn't have to do a refund. I'm not sure why they didn't come right off, but then they needed a CO, so they came in and paid the remainder of the fees. So they, not sure why they didn't come in sooner, but they had intention of coming in and asking for a reduction of the fees. And we didn't want to have to do a refund, so we charged them a down payment and the rest, when, if you had decided before they needed a CO, which didn't happen.
And that's when I basically said to you, they have to pay $7 a panel.
Which they did. You did say that.
Is it customary for us to issue, for the city to issue permits without the fee upfront? Generally speaking, my experience, you go for a building permit, you charge me a fee, I pay it, I have a permit.
I would agree with you, Counsel. I didn't realize that happened that way. So we'll, I'll deal with it administratively if you let me.
That's all I've got right now. I don't know, you have...
If it's appropriate, I think at this time, from my perspective, that, you know, if the council still needs more information, we can provide it. We can take our, but all I'm trying to tell you is that there was nothing untoward here. This, we were just trying to get something accomplished to achieve a equitable fee, and that's how we were approaching it.
Counselor Johnston, do you have anything else at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay. Counselor Berman?
Just hesitate to say anything, but I just, I think it's probably not a coincidence that somebody established in the industry proposed a fee or suggested a fee that turns out to be about the actual cost of doing the inspections when we work it out. And so I don't, I don't see city staff as being influenced by a number given by an applicant who now can't get a refund anyway. What I see is that somebody with vast experience in the industry knows what municipalities in Maine and the region normally charge, and they normally charge that because that's about the cost of conducting inspections, which when we did the work, we also came up with. And so there's two independent numbers based on the same kind of data and process, which is why I'm totally comfortable going with the numbers that city staff suggest.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions or comments? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to move this to a public hearing on November 18th, 2024. Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
No.
Okay, motion passes six zero, six one, excuse me. Thank you, David. Okay, that now takes us to item 10, and that is the administrative update this evening. City Administrator Bahanko?
Thank you, Your Honor. What I'd like to bring to your attention is that the public meeting of Saco and Old Orchard Beach PPI traffic study will be going forward at the Old Orchard Beach Town Council meeting on Tuesday, November 19th at 6:30 PM, located at 1 Portland Avenue in Old Orchard. Saco residents who would like to learn more about this study are encouraged to attend. The RFP, I just wanted to bring to the attention of the city council, that there is an RFP going out for general engineering and professional services. This is something that we will be doing for a result of a five-year, we've had a five-year horizon for our engineering services, which have come pretty much to its useful life. So we're going out for these professional services. They'll include consulting services from general engineering, environmental services, landscape architecture, land surveying, and other work on various projects throughout Saco. Such projects would include, but not limited to, traffic civilization, wetland and environmental permitting, and engineering planning, board pair reviews, and design and construction services. What we'll be looking is, we're going to go for a shorter period of time. We're going to be doing three years, and with the ability for people to extend the contract, if they're working on something, they would be able to extend it for two more years. So for example, Tiam Bond is working on the wastewater treatment plant. You certainly wouldn't want to change your engineer in the middle of that design and review as we go forward with the construction of that plant. But this is something that we are doing, and will probably, interested firms should respond to the RFP posted on the city's website by December 4th by 2:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. And there's more information on the website. Elections, early voting at City Hall concludes Thursday, October 31st, which has passed. And there is, of course, voting, all voting on Election Day will take place at Thornton Academy in the gymnasium from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Veterans Day, Saco and Bedford will host their joint Veterans Day parade on Monday, November 11th, beginning at 10:00 AM. Excuse me. Additionally, I just have some information just to bring people up to date relative to the residential measure and list and the complete commercial and industrial revaluation. They will be out in the field doing this work, and I just want to continue to advise people that that work is going on. All the people that are doing the work have to be identified with an ID, and we have advised the city police department of them going out, so we wanted to make sure our residents knew that this was a city project that was being done. Finally, just upcoming agenda preview for 11-18, presentation by Vision Government Solutions Residential Measure and List. We thought it would be important for the councils to understand what the mechanisms are that they're going to be going through for the measurement list. And again, I just want to reiterate that this is not a revaluation for residential, it's a measuring list. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for city administrator? Okay, not seeing any. That takes us now to item 11, that's council discussion and comment. Any counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I've actually prepared a speech. I never do that. I typically just make notes and discuss, but I feel this is the time when I should actually have it well-written, drafted, and ready to go. Tonight marks my last council meeting here as a city counselor, and it's hard to believe that after seven years, this chapter is coming to a close. Unfortunately, I won't be present at our next meeting as I'll be out of state, and on Iraq inauguration night with no declared write-in, I'll be in Augusta for my new role. So tonight, I want to take a moment to express my gratitude. First, to my wife Alexa and my two incredible children, Sadie and Kinley, thank you for allowing me to serve this wonderful community. The council meets an average of 35 times a year, so that means my family has sacrificed almost 250 evenings and countless other hours over these years. Sadie and Kinley, with your sacrifice of time from your father, a most cherished resource that you can never get back, you are truly daughters of the City of Saco, and you have earned that title. Your support and patience have been my foundation, and I am so grateful. Alexa, you are my first vote, the one that matters the most. Without your unwavering unanimous vote of support, I wouldn't be here. You sacrificed just as much stepping up to meet the needs of our family while I pursued this path and further this journey. Thank you for being my partner, both in this life and in service. To my colleagues, both past and present, thank you. When we agreed on issues, that was fantastic. But even more important was the times where we disagreed. In those moments, I learned from each of you, and our respectful debates have helped shape me into a better counselor and a person. Your insights, your respect, and your commitment to the city have been invaluable. I'm especially grateful for the honor of serving as deputy mayor in my final year on council. Thank you for entrusting me in this role. It has been a privilege to represent the council in this capacity, and I'm proud of what we've accomplished together. To the residents, to my residents of Ward 1, thank you for your trust in giving me the opportunity to grow as a city official. When I first took on this role, I had an ideas and a vision, but I also had much to learn. Over the years, through every challenge and every conversation, your voices have guided me. You've pushed me to understand the real day-to-day issues that matter to our community. I am grateful for your feedback, your encouragement, and even your constructive criticism. Each experience has shaped me into a stronger, more thoughtful representative or counselor. Your support has meant the world to me, and I look forward to continuing to serve our community in my new role at the state level. I carry all that I've learned here with me, and I'm eager to advocate for us in Augusta with the same dedication I brought to this council. To the staff of Saco, thank you for always being there to assist whenever I needed it. Your dedication behind the scenes has been invaluable, and our work together has helped bring real progress to this community. To my successor, who happens to be in the room today, or this evening, I'd like to share a simple piece of advice as we prepare to implement the peaceful transfer of power. Listen and learn. It's that simple. These are the best tools you'll have. Lean on your colleagues and our staff. They're good people with so much to offer. And please, reach out to me as you need, because I am a neighbor as well. Thank you, Saco.
Thank you, Saco, for the honor of serving you as your counselor. It has been a privilege, and I look forward to representing this city in Augusta. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. It has been an honor serving with you for five years. You were a teacher or mentor to me when I first came on, and to Doug, exactly, listen and, you know, valuable resource right there. So, I do wish you the best of luck, you will be missed, but you're not gone, still representing both the city and its residents. Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, likewise, you know, I don't prepare comments either, but, you know, I certainly would be remiss if I didn't, you know, recognize and your service, your contributions, and, you know, state that, you know, I appreciate all that you've done, the time, and obviously the commitment, but, you know, equally so the friendship. I found that you always approached things very thoughtfully and pragmatic, which is something I appreciate and have always, you know, tried to do myself in our discussions, whether we agreed or disagreed, we're always very cordial. And, I mean, I guess I'd say, you know, you certainly helped me be a better counselor, but equally, you know, a better person, so, just think for the seven years, and, you know, he's certainly not leaving the community, and as I said to you earlier, you're welcome back anytime.
Counselor Gunn, and Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Archer, it's been about five years, that's gone quick. I want to offer you premature congratulations on being, having the honor tomorrow of being elected to the State House of Representatives. The fact, I want to talk about time commitment, the fact that you have, have offered yourself the ability to have the time to serve our community as a whole in Augusta is something that I admire, and frankly, I'm a little jealous of, though, because I wish I'd have, wish I had, you know, my circumstances were a little different, but, you know, that being said, I'm rooting for you tremendously well. I wanted to point out, in the entirety of the legislature, I don't know what the numbers are, but the amount of people that, you know, have served their communities, whether it's on the school board, city council, town council, selectmen, I don't know what the numbers are, but you enter your new position with a unique perspective of being able, having to govern a city, a large one by Maine standards, on a day-to-day basis. And it's not just theoretical in terms of what you're going to be discussing, what you're going to be debating, what you're going to be offering as bills and potential laws, you have that on-the-ground experience that a lot of these folks, good people all around, but maybe not have. So, the fact that you're going to go in there with that advantage makes me very hopeful for the future of Saco's voice in Augusta, because we are a proud community, an old community, and we have a lot to say. And sometimes, Saco, we spend a little too much time looking inward on ourselves, as opposed to looking out and offering what we, as our people, the people who've lived here our entire lives, can offer to the city. And you have the unique ability to really push the envelope up there. So, between, you know, that and everything else, I want to thank you personally for all that you've done to help me in terms of when I was getting used to this role. This very nice individual sent me a very nice copy of the Robert's Rules of Order when I first got started. I was unprepared for how large it is, but it was a very kind gesture, and I really appreciated it. So I just want to wish you well, do good, and give them hell. Thank you.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Marshall, I want to just also send my gratitude your way. I am sitting here in this seat as an appointee originally, very contentious moment in Saco government. I remember it vividly when the appointment was being discussed, and you correctly identified numerous votes of support from the ward. And for me, it was evidence of commitment to democracy. And as I recall, you made the motion, Nate seconded it, and to this day, in my mind, the Marines came through again, so I appreciate that. And it was also a fairly difficult transition for me, and I knew that you were there for the help when I needed help, and I appreciate that. I have no doubt you're going to do wonderful things up in Augusta, and you'll have all of our support, so go get them.
Anyone else? Counselor Parks?
Before I get into the Counselor Archer love fest, I just have to say that I am incredibly privileged with two of the greatest neighbors up here on the council. I could talk to both these guys for hours about everything and nothing at all. Now, with that being said, I'm, knock on wood, keeping one neighbor, and I'm losing another. Now, I, I'm not going to go on forever about this. I had a mentor once who had a sign in his office that left some words that I always tried to live by diligently in my adult life. It was, "Wish it, dream it, and do it." Now, I got to give you credit, Counselor Archer, because you're not just wishing it, you're not just dreaming it, you're actually doing it. So go up to Augusta and make us proud. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 12, that is an adjournment this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor Gunn? Motion made by Counselor Gunn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Wholeheartedly, no.
I was waiting for that. Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Reluctantly, yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six one. All right, thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.